Thank you, sir. Let us pray. Sovereign Lord God, do we come before you once again asking for the wisdom, insight, and discernment that is needed to face the challenges that come before the County Board of Supervisors today? We ask that you grant vision and direction to these leaders who are charged with fashioning our path to the future for Mojave County. May they sense your guidance as they deal with each issue that they have on today's agenda, and may all that takes place in this morning's meeting be of blessing and benefit to all of the citizens of Mojave County. For this we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much, Pastor. To lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm turning it over to Supervisor Gene Bishop.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to an action to call for an executive session to be held on October 6, 2014 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS Section 38-431.03A, subsections 3 and 4, to discuss the items noticed in the agenda with an asterisk.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Official business. Item 1, Discussion of Pending or Contemplating Litigation Claims. There is no executive session, so we'll move on to item 2, Committee and/or Legislative Reports. We'll start with Supervisor Johnson to my far left.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to update on the hearing on our uranium, the judge rejected many of the government's objections, and our coalition does have standing. We're looking at, they said, the judge said two weeks. We figure probably two months before we actually get a ruling. Also, Oregon Senator Ron Wyden's legislative director, Sarah Bitterman, put together a conference call with National Association of Counties Environmental Energy and Land Use Steering Committee and the Public Land Steering Committee. She spoke about Senator Wyden's legislative proposal that is currently ready to be introduced to Congress this month regarding the permanent reauthorization of PIL. If passed, this new legislation will supposedly fully fund PIL plus account for additional 50% to account for all future adjustments totaling $600 million a year. Secure rural schools would be fully funded at fiscal year 2011 levels, plus 50%, totaling $564 million a year, and the conservation fund would be funded at $900 million a year in order to gain support from other members of Congress. And from counties on the East Coast, Senator Wyden has introduced three additional funds with this legislation. The first two new funds included are a domestic onshore energy fund, a domestic offshore energy fund. The onshore fund would provide payments totaling $425 million to counties that create energy sources onshore such as oil, natural gas, and coal. The formula for this program would be calculated by taking a percentage of the amount produced in the county of the total production in the nation multiplied by 80% of $425 million to compensate for renewable energy in the U.S., those counties that create energy sources for renewable energy would use the same formula, only they would multiply their percentage of production by 20% for the offshore fund. $125 million would be provided for counties with a formula based on the percentage of oil and gas production as part of the national production. The third fund is called the Coastal Water Impact Fund. This would give $300 million a year to coastal counties for fisheries, massive trade, shipping terminals, et cetera. Calculations are based on a percentage of total coastlines as a percentage of total national coastlines with a cap of $50 million for any individual state. Senator Wyden wants to keep the legislation simple. I have concerns, especially with the fact that there's no mention of active management in the proposal. I mentioned to NACO members that it is my understanding that without active management, House Republicans won't support the bill. Commissioner Todd Devlin from Prairie County, Arkansas, signed out a small proposal to be included, maybe included in Wyden's to raise the PIL population cap on counties with populations under 5,000. NACO is going to put the numbers together, see if Devlin's proposal could potentially hurt large counties and wants the financial gain is for the small population counties. Due to these concerns, we took no action at that time. In a follow-up, though, the proposal did come forward for small county populations, and it really will not affect us. Also, at this time, making everybody's indulgent, if the IT would key up a short video, I think it's something that's a good public service announcement and something that maybe we should get out to our people. Kind of key it up. It's a movie theater in Japan, and they just did a, they asked everybody to turn their cell phones on, and maybe it'll tell you. is something. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. I'm Supervisor Johnson, and that's a lesson that we could all do with some learning, including myself. Supervisor Watson?
Just to inform you that I went to a meeting last week in Phoenix for the statewide BLM Resource Advisory Council, and one of the many subjects that we were discussing that hits home for Mojave County is the wild horse and burrow issue. If you'd like further information, I can visit with you on the entirety of the two days.
Okay, well, I will definitely do that. Supervisor Bishop?
I have nothing, thank you.
I'm going to depart from my norm because I actually do have a couple of updates. Last week, it was my obligation to go visit Arizona's Department of Administrative Law with our attorney, Carlos Ronstadt, regarding the pre-hearing. That was, nothing of any critical import was done, except I made, they did settle a schedule to resolve our Planet Ranch issue at the administrative law level. The first brief will be filed simultaneous, both sides file simultaneously this Friday. 10 weeks after that, there'll be a simultaneous response, and then 10 days, or five days after that, there'll be a simultaneous reply. If my recollection serves, October 9 will be the date of the oral argument, and the administrative law judge has pledged to have an answer within 20 days after that, either pro or con, for Mojave County. So at the latest, we should have a resolution at the administrative law level, which is not the Superior Court level because we still have avenues after that, by the mid to late October. I will also add that I was very glad to attend that meeting because our counsel, Carlos Ronstadt, in my mind, and for those who don't know, I'm an attorney, was, did an amazingly good job when he was out there. He was, he was quite, he was quite good. I was very pleased to see that. The other issue is I attended the Central Arizona Project CAP meeting right after the administrative law hearing at Planet Ranch, because the Planet Ranch issue, whether to support it or to reject it, was on their agenda, and my understanding was that they were intending to support it. We showed, Carlos Ronstadt and I both showed up, filled out the request to speak form. The item was pulled. It was before we could speak. It was not pulled because of our grand eloquence. We weren't given a chance to discuss it, unfortunately. It was cool-pulled because my understanding is that at the last meeting that they had it agendized, the board members of CAP had required the staff to engage with Mojave County as to the pros and cons as they saw it. Staff had failed to do so, and that offended a few of the board members, so they yanked it again. In my particular opinion, they can keep yanking it forever, and I'd count that a win for Mojave County. So that's, so that's good. I also attended the Mojave County Water Authority meeting this last Tuesday. They had this same issue as a discussion point. I explained to them Mojave County's concerns. Likewise, and Mojave County is a member of the Mojave County Water Authority, likewise they took no action on it, and they're going to have, they instructed their counsel, Maureen George, to talk to our counsel, Carlos Ronstadt, to figure out exactly what the issue is. From the Water Authority board members, whether it's CAP or whether it's the Mojave County Water Authority, their issues are, the end result is what they view as a positive environmental impact by the use of the water, which would help them with some of the projects and federal requirements they have on the reclamation side of things. The long-term environment, or excuse me, the long-term economic impacts in the area had not been considered by them, and it behoves us to educate them, because there's a definite cost there. And that concludes my report. Going on to item 3, the County Administrator's Report.
Mr. Chairman, I have no report.
Thank you. County Administrator Hendricks. Item 4, Can I have a motion to approve the July 2, 2014 Board of Supervisors' special minutes to July 21, 2014 Board of Supervisor Meeting Minutes and the July 28, 2014 Board of Supervisors' special meeting minutes?
Shall I move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, Call to the Public. I have one person signed up to speak. That is Mark Shaver, who'll be talking to us regarding public participation on the general plan. Mark?
I live at 4054 West Hiller Drive in Meadview, Arizona. Last week, I attended the Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting regarding public participation. There is an effort being made by members of the commission to reduce, marginalize, or in other words, do away with any discussion regarding the creation or re-establishment of the Citizens Committee as outlined in a 2005 general plan at that time. I find that disturbing that we had this discussion about citizens' participation so late in the game, when most of you know I started this conversation several months ago, prior to the, you know, the election of the Board of Supervisor for number four seat. At the same time, I was also told at that time during the 2010 that the county manager had the authority to sidestep the process without the board's approval when he changed that. I searched the archives for that meeting because until I actually see it in statute, he was, he did it without the board's approval at that time, and I can't find that meeting anywhere. And I looked at the state statute and the job description for the county manager, but at the same time, the disclaimer also noted says this doesn't fully describe his function and his powers and duties. I know that you can't reply to me, but at the same time, that does not stop the county magistrate or the deputy attorney from answering my question. I know the board and the rules guarding call to a public applies to the board, but not to them, at least not that I know, that I see in writing. So if the county manager would like to answer that question, does he or does he not have the authority to sidestep the public process without the board's approval? I'd like to know, and if Bill Enstrom, the county attorney, knows that state statute, I'd like to hear it because I can't find it. Thank you.
Is there any desire to comment on that, County Administrator Hendricks?
Mr. Chairman, while I have no problem with the county administrator answering the question, I think if, I think it is, call to the public is for nobody to answer, because if we start this, we're going to have everybody coming up asking questions of the county manager and county attorney. That's just my opinion.
I will say this, because I really, and I should not have passed it on to you, County Administrator Hendricks, but I will, I'm going to make a comment here in that the only authority the county administrator or county manager ever has is what the County Board of Supervisors decides to give them. They're not even listed as a statutory agent. They're not even in statute. So it's, they're pure contract.
So that would mean that...
I can't engage you in any further conversation, sir. We are...
Okay. Can I, can I make a comment without replying to you?
No.
Okay.
Okay, no. Thank you. Next time. Is there anyone else who would like to participate in call to the public? Seeing none, we're going, we'll go on to our next item. The presentation of Roxy Tross, BLM Colorado River District Manager, and introduction of Tim Burke, Arizona Strip District Manager. I'm going to turn this over to Supervisor Gary Watson, who's heavily involved in both these issues. Gary, the dabble is yours.
Yes, it's my pleasure to introduce Roxy Tross from the Colorado River District Manager, and she's going to be introducing Tim Burke, who is our new Arizona Strip District Manager. Scott Florence has retired, and I had an excellent working relationship with Scott over many years, and looking forward to working with Tim on the Arizona Strip. It's a huge area and a lot of opportunity, and Roxy, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors, and thank you Supervisor Watson for ensuring that we're on the agenda. It's an honor for me to be here this morning and a pleasure for me to introduce my colleague, Tim Burke, who is the new district manager for the Arizona Strip. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. So I am Tim Burke. I am the new district manager for the Arizona Strip. The Arizona Strip comprises about 2.8 million acres of public land from Glen Canyon all the way down to Lake Mead, north of the Grand Canyon. Probably about three-quarters of that acreage is in Mojave County. It includes the Grand Canyon Parishant National Monument as well as the Vermillion Cliffs National Monument and the Arizona Strip Field Office. So I've actually been up there since the end of May, so I apologize not getting down to the Board of Supervisors sooner, but I did get the opportunity to meet with Supervisor Watson last week at the Bureau of Land Management Resource Advisory Council meeting, and I'm looking forward to a strong working relationship with Mojave County. And to tell you a little bit about myself, I was, grew up in Salt Lake City and graduated from Utah State University with a degree in range management. I've worked in several Bureau of Land Management offices, including the Escalante and Price Resource Areas in Utah, Carson City and Tonopah in Nevada, Bakersfield, California, Santa Fe, New Mexico, Carlsbad, New Mexico, and then most recently, I worked in Alturas, California. Was the field manager of the office there for the past 16 years. Alturas sits about 200 miles north of Reno, and the past two years I was in Alturas, I was also manager of the Surprise Field Office, which is about 25 miles away over the Warner Mountain Range, and managed a one-half-million-acre field office mainly out of Cedarville, California. This mainly manages land in Nevada. I'd say in Alturas, probably the major issues I dealt with were wild horses and sage grass management, as maybe where sage grass is proposed for listing under the Endangered Species Act. In moving to the Arizona Strip, we have no sage grouse, and we have no wild horses either, so it's kind of a whole new story for me. And actually, at this point, it appears like the main issues are uranium and actually access to, public access to the wave, which is a rock formation on the Vermillion Cliffs National Monument. Anyway, like I said, I'm happy to be here, really excited to work on the Arizona Strip, and look forward to coordinating our management efforts with Mojave County.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burke. Does anyone else have anything for Mr. Burke?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chair. If it's possible, if they have time, I'd like to meet with them after the meeting.
Will you be available? It won't be a long meeting at all today.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Burke. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Going on to the Consent Agenda. The following items listed on the Consent Agenda will be considered as a group enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless a board member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda for separate discussion and action. Is there anything to be removed from the Consent Agenda, starting with Supervisor Johnson?
1734.
1734.
None.
Supervisor Bishop?
None.
Now, that being said, can I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the exception of items 17 and 34?
Still moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to item 17.
Mr. Chairman, a motion for discussion, item 17.
Is there a second?
Second motion?
Okay.
Mr. Chair, the question I had was, this was placed on the agenda without any backup and didn't get anything until, what, late Friday? I was curious why this was put on the agenda without having a contract to be approved.
And, Mr. Chairman, possibly I could address that. And with my apologies...
Please.
On, as we know, on July 24, the staff was directed to identify counsel and then bring back a not-to-exceed contract in front of the board for consideration, and it was my intent to bring this item back the previous meeting. Unfortunately, we had, because of the sense of urgency, I believe, the board placed on this particular item, and unfortunately, staff wasn't able to secure a consultant, an attorney, or a firm to represent us in this matter, and we were forced to postpone this until this meeting. Once again, I actually assigned Nick Hunt, our Development Services Director, to contact some additional firms, and he was successful in securing this particular firm that didn't have a contract, but he was not able to obtain and compile the information needed until late after, you know, late last week. I thought it was of sufficient importance, however, to go ahead and, even though this item was late, to request that it be placed on the agenda for your consideration, and again, my apologies.
Can I translate that? County Administrator Hendricks, is that you want it on the agenda so we could take action, and you're just getting the information to follow?
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay.
That's the only question I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Motion to approve item 17.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, motion to discussion, item 34.
Second motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Supervisor Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, I guess the question I had is not so much with these roads. I didn't see any information as to why we were making these non-motorized roads. I don't know, somebody from Public Works, if we have a policy, are we going to start doing this?
Good morning, Chairman Moss. Supervisor Johnson, this request came as a result of a service comment in the Meadview area with regard to the frequent occurrence of motorized vehicles, ATVs, et cetera, utilizing some of the washes between certain local residential streets in the Meadview area. These are on-surface roadways, but the type of sign that we're proposing, the no motor vehicles, represents a standard MUTCD sign. So it doesn't necessarily follow a particular policy, but addresses a service comment and a frequent use of motorized vehicles within the washes.
And the reason we're not allowing motorized vehicles, is it unsafe to the, to our wash? I mean, what's the reason for it?
Supervisor Johnson, it's my understanding that it has just risen to a level of a public nuisance, and this does represent one, one approach toward mitigating that nuisance in the area.
Is this county land that we have there that we own the washes?
Supervisor Johnson, no. To my understanding, the Mojave County does not have the property within the washes, but the signs would be posted within the street rights of ways.
Do we have that authority to go post something on somebody's property that they can't use a motorized vehicle?
Supervisor Johnson, that is in line with the MUTCD, just discretionary authority, should the board wish to, you know, limit and or prohibit use of motorized vehicles within the washes.
I guess, I don't know if it would be your question or Attorney Ekstrom, but a lot of people own land. I own some land out there. If you came out and put a sign up saying no motorized vehicle going through my wash, I mean, is there anything you can do about that? I mean, is that just a thanks for putting the sign up, but I don't really care? Mr. Ekstrom, is that something?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, I practically don't know, and I'd be happy to look into that to see what sort of authority we have. We can post it, but to my knowledge, I don't know that it's enforceable. Sounds like a public health and safety issue that we have rather broad authority in, but I don't know of a specific law that addresses it, and we'll look into that.
This is obviously in Supervisor Bishop's area, and it wasn't anything to do with that. It was just the overall policy of the county. If this is something that maybe we should look into before we do something we have no teeth for, I'm sure it was brought forward to you, but, so your call, Supervisor Bishop.
There is a county ordinance that prevents motorized vehicles traveling on private or public roads without specific written permission, and this particular area is a new fitness trail that has been put together for the citizens of Meadview. It has exercise spots and benches, and it's a quite nice new area that they're enjoying there. The problem with the motorized vehicles is because the sand wash has been upgraded and cleaned out next to and adjoining this fitness trail, there's motorized vehicles that are not just using it, but they're, they're racing up and down the banks, and it's causing a lot of dust and noise and destroying the beauty of the new fitness trail. So I would recommend that we approve.
Is that in the form of a motion, Supervisor Bishop?
Yes, that is in the form of a motion. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it carries. Public hearings. Item 37, Discussion on Possible Action. Ray, approve the placement of a lien for dangerous building abatement in the amount of $5,684.39 in accordance with Section 110 of the International Property Maintenance Code, Assessor's Parcel Number 306-04-148B 5872, West Borough Drive, Golden Valley, Arizona. I'm opening this item for public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this subject? Going once, going twice, going three times. I'm closing the public hearing. May I have a motion from the board?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it carries. Item 38, Discussion on Possible Action. Ray, clarification of Mojave County's policies regarding smoke-free facilities. This is continued from our September 2, 2014 Board of Supervisor meetings. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since our last meeting, we had somebody with a pipe smoking inside the court facility in Lake Havasu. I think we need to get a policy out to our employees exactly what the rules are. I don't know what staff has, has come up with. I don't know that it needs to be in the merit rules, but I think it needs to be clear for our personnel and for the public exactly what our rules are, and they should be uniformed between all county buildings. That's, that's my thought. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
And I, does anyone else have any comments in following up to this?
I'll make a comment, and I agree with Supervisor Johnson that we need some uniformity. I will confess some ambivalence on the e-cigarettes, mostly because I see it as a, like similar to nicotine gum, it's maybe a healthier way for them to beat the addiction. On the other hand, there's some certain decorum that needs to be taking place, especially in our courtrooms and public meetings such as this. So I think the proper response here, and I'm playing this out of Supervisor Johnson's consideration, is that we direct staff to develop a proposed policy dealing with the e-cigarettes versus cigarettes issues and bring it back to this board for consideration. Supervisor Johnson, would that be okay with you?
Chairman Moss, yes, that's good. I think I just, I think I thought the first meeting we would be able to handle this. I had no idea it would go on this long.
Right.
It needs to be done sooner and farther than later, just with a blanket policy, and I think the biggest thing is to allow our employees to know exactly what the rules are, not because they're violating, but people are coming in, and like I said last time, I had people with e-cigarettes actually blowing smoke in our county employees' face. So if we have something that lets them know exactly what the rules are and we get them posted, that would be fine with me. I would second that motion.
Okay. So that actually was in the form of a motion. I'm... I'm the chairman, I don't want to be doing that unless I actually have to. But is that your intent, to make that motion?
Yes, it'd be my intent to make that motion.
Supervisor, I'm sorry, I was going to promote you. County Administrator Hendrix.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that we're trying to accomplish is, you know, we've got the personnel policies on one hand, and then in the old merit rules, we had these administrative procedures, and they were found in various locations. So one of the goals that we had with the new personnel policies is try to accumulate all policies and procedures under the personnel policies and procedures, so we could locate them in one document. What I would, if the board so chose, what I would like to do, if you follow through with Supervisor Johnson's wishes, is direct staff to come up with the all-encompassing procedure for this, for cigarettes and e-cigarettes. And it sounds like the board wants to include e-cigarettes as a prohibited act. But bring that forward to be included in the personnel policies.
Okay. Let's do it this way, then, Supervisor Johnson, just so that we can make progress, because I understand your concern. Let's have a motion on whether or not we're going to include the e-cigarettes as a prohibitive act, and then direct staff to include that within our policies.
Chairman Moss, I believe, I thought I saw earlier, Ms. Mead is here. I believe e-cigarettes are already included in it. I believe it's just something that we can give staff two weeks, and if they don't do it, we'll give it to the Chairman Moss to come up with a policy in two days.
Well, see, I am not necessarily in favor of prohibiting e-cigarettes, so that'd be a bad person to put in charge.
But I mean, the statewide program that we have includes a lot of...
Chairman, or Director Mead, if you can come down and address the question from Supervisor Johnson?
Good morning, Supervisor Moss, Supervisor Bishop, Supervisor Watson, and Supervisor Johnson. It is my understanding that with the smoke-free ordinance that was passed, our law, it does not include e-cigarettes, although most organizations are including that because there is not enough information out about the vapor. There has been one study to show that these are helpful in helping people to stop smoking. But most cities, governments are choosing to include e-cigarettes as part of the no-smoking free campus, although my staff in the Smoke Free Arizona are not allowed to enforce anything beyond the 20-foot rule. If the county does a campus-wide thing, which we encourage, the...
I think I know where you're going, and I know there's been some studies coming out now that I think e-cigarettes could be harmful, like everything else is harmful to us. I guess where my problem comes from, it's not so much that I won't want somebody to use something that could stop them from smoking, it's the fact that now somebody comes in and says, "Well, I'm smoking apple peels while I'm smoking peaches." Where something say, "Look, you can take, you know, five minutes or a half hour while you're in here and not smoke anything in our buildings," or they can smoke everything. I don't care, that's what I'm looking at, just so we don't have the problems with our people.
That's what most agencies are doing, correct?
Thank you, Director Mead, very, it was very helpful, thank you. So I believe there's a motion, but did you want to clarify that motion in light of that information, Supervisor Johnson?
I would make a motion for staff to bring back at our next meeting, a policy, proposed policy for our facilities, and a plan to inform our employees and the public on what the rules are regarding smoking of any kind on Mojave County property.
And that would be to include the prohibition of e-cigarettes?
Right, all smoking, I think.
The reason I say that, not be picky, but the reason why we get around the e-cigarettes is the law doesn't consider it smoking, it considers it vapor.
Right.
I've been reading up on it, so, okay. Is there a second to that?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I will be opposed, just to be contrary, sorry about that, folks. Item thirty-nine, discussion of possible action. Ray, acknowledge receipt of findings regarding Constable Travis Heaton of the State of Arizona Constable Ethics Standards and Training Board in their letter dated August 20, 2014, to Constable Heaton, also received by the Mojave County Office, Mojave County Attorney's Office, on August 27, 2014. May I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second motion.
Any further discussion?
I have some discussion, Mr. Chairman. For those in the public that didn't read the backup, we received a letter back from the Constables Association, and I'll kind of go through it. According to Arizona Revised Statute, it's 11445-K, this is to Mr. Constable Heaton, that you failed to provide copies of your work logs monthly to the clerk of the Board of Supervisors and the clerk of the Justice Court as required, ARS 22137D, by not obtaining a minimum of 16 hours of Arizona Post-approved training annually, and providing copies of that training to the board within 30 days after completion. In fact, the board has no record of you ever providing copies of your training. Please note, watching AZ Post videos for continued education credit is not acceptable unless a supervisor or other constable verifies the videos were watched. The board's subcommittee on August 19, 14, made the recommendation to the full board, which was voted on August 20, 14, to issue a reprimand for conduct. The board is requiring you to attend the new constable's training in January 15 for all newly-elected constables. This requirement is in addition to the annual 16 hours of continued education requirements for all constables. Please note that it's not necessary for you to join any organization. The problem I have is, we have a Constable's Ethic and Training Board down there who did absolutely nothing. Here's somebody who's been in office, who's required to have 16 hours of training every year, required to turn in the paperwork monthly, which they didn't do, neither, and they're just saying, "Okay, after being four years in elected office, going out and serving papers under the full authority," I'm guessing carried a gun and a badge. It leads me to wonder what good this Constable's Ethic and Training Board is if they're not going to hold their people accountable. That's the biggest thing that really bothered me.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Johnson. What is the next step, Attorney Ekstrom? How would we handle this now? We've got it verified that he's not fulfilling his statutory obligations. What do we do now?
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that the responsibility for removing a constable lies primarily with the Superior Court. And if the constable does not do what the Ethics Committee recommends, I think the board, or even my office, could notify the court of that fact and make a recommendation that the court takes some action against the constable.
Now, I'm asking this just because my limited knowledge in this area, normally the court takes action when a petition is delivered to it. It doesn't initiate things in its own right. Is this different here, or would someone like the county attorney's office have to lodge a complaint or a petition with the court, serve Constable Heaton, give him a chance to respond, and then the court would take action at that point?
Yeah, there's really no direction on that. I think the logical thing to do would be to have either the board or my office notify the courts and ask them to take action and let them figure out procedurally exactly how they want to do that.
Okay. Now, this is me being obstinate again, or maybe unreasonable, but wouldn't that be the courts giving this board legal advice? Aren't they prohibited from doing that by law? I mean, I'm trying to figure out how they would do what they're supposed to be doing.
They would do it independently.
They would do it independently. All right, then, let's try that route. Go ahead, Supervisor Watson, I'm sorry.
No, thank you Supervisor, or Chairman Moss. I just wanted to point out that this situation with Mr. Heaton is not a new situation. It's been, over the course of a number of years, of this person receiving the constable salary and doing absolutely nothing. So just want to point out, it's not a new problem, it's an old problem, and we've tried to address it before. I'm glad to see it's being addressed now.
Yeah, and thank you very much, Supervisor Watson. And that was the purpose of my questions to Attorney Ekstrom, is what do we do to get it solved? And so I'm trying to figure that out. Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This has been an ongoing problem for years and years, and he just seems to not comply with what the statute requires. So I would like to see Constable Heaton provide 16 hours of training for this year and attend the new constable training, as has been recommended by the Constable Ethics Committee. Should he not do that, I think we should consider, or we should hold him in malfeasance of office and remove him. And at the very least, we should maybe reduce him to possibly a dollar-a-year constable until he complies with state statute and the county board.
And would that include, is that in the form of a motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
If you want, that's just to accept the report, you want to accept that and then we'll move on to the others.
Sure, we'll break it into two parts. There's a motion to accept the report, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Second part, what do we do now, Supervisor Bishop, Supervisor Watson, Supervisor Johnson?
I think I agree with Supervisor Bishop. I would like to, if the board is so inclined, to have our staff meet or at least contact the Constables Ethic Commission to say that, you know, "We're not happy with this outcome." I mean, they're supposed to oversee the constables, they have a complaint, and all they said was, "After four years, oh, do your 16 hours." I mean, I don't believe that's serving the public good, and it doesn't serve the other constables for doing an excellent job out there working. I'd like to have a two-part thing where we continue up, like Supervisor Bishop said, but at the same time, start a dialogue with the Constables Association to say, "Hey, we expect a little more stringent requirements or oversight of the constables that are out there."
So I'm detecting an idea of a two-pronged approach. The first prong would be to have staff contact the Constables Association and inquire as to where is the teeth in what they've proposed, how do they make sure it actually happens? The second prong would be, from the board supervisor's standpoint, is asking the county attorney's office, because I don't think we can direct you, and this is asking the county attorney's office to confer with the courts as to the proper process here, bring that back to the board, and if we don't get relief at that point, we will then consider reducing him to a dollar-a-year constable, as basically the only thing we can do statutorily. Am I interpreting these threads correctly?
I would never consider them threads, but...
No, threads, threads.
Oh, threads.
D, not a T. Different directions we can go, different pathways.
I believe so, and if somebody wants to, is curious as to why the county would even consider dealing with the Ethics and Committee for the Constables, we do tack a $5.00 fine on to our court fines for constable training, which could be removed, and then we pay for the training ourselves out of our budget. So we participate in this, we fund part of their organization, so I think that would be correct, what you said.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Supervisor Bishop?
According to Arizona State Statute, the Constables Ethics Board does not have any teeth to remove a constable. They can only do the investigation and make recommendations to the county attorney's office and to the presiding judge. It would have to change statute to give them more authority than that.
Okay, Supervisor Watson?
Yes, in the discussion earlier, I had assumed that Supervisor Bishop had taken a stronger stance than just remitting it back to the attorney. So if you would like to reiterate your position again, Supervisor Bishop.
Can you, can I say something before you do? I'm going to give you, I've been trying to stay back as a moderator. I think really the time is just to pull the trigger. We should ask the county attorney's office, as our legal representative, file a petition with the Superior Court, attaching the report and asking that they take relief, including removing him from office. Just be direct, let's be very direct about this, as opposed to passing it off to the judges, passing it off to county attorneys, passing it off to the Constables Association. Let's kick down the door.
Yeah, and I think Supervisor Bishop will be able to clarify that.
And I'm going to turn it over to Supervisor Bishop.
It's my understanding that we could hold him for malfeasance of office immediately if the county attorney chose to do so and recommended to the presiding judge to remove him from office. He has just been re-elected, and it's my belief, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ekstrom, that if we remove him from office in this year, he would not be able to take office in the year that he was just elected for. That would prevent him from holding any elected office if he's removed for malfeasance. Can you correct me if I'm wrong?
Mr. Chairman, Bishop, that is correct.
Okay. So we've established part one, which we've accepted, the Constables Ethics Commission's report, and they've given us a very solid factual foundation. What is the action we as a board are going to take? Supervisor Bishop?
I would make a motion that we proceed to charge Constable Heaton with malfeasance of office and remove him during this calendar year.
And do that through the county's attorney of offices and the courts?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, I'm going to add something. I believe what Supervisor Bishop, just to clarify, I'm going to put it in what little legal ease I have, is that we'll ask the county attorney's office, as our representative, to file a complaint with the courts and ask the court to remove Constable Heaton, give Constable Heaton a chance to respond, and we'll go from there. Okay? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Going on to item forty, discussion of possible action. Ray, possible state legislation for PILT payments from the state of Arizona. Supervisor Johnson?
Motion for discussion, Mr. Chairman?
Second motion.
Go ahead, Supervisor Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, all this battling we're doing with the federal government payment in lieu of taxes, I think one thing we've overlooked, we've dealt with state land, you know, forever since state land's been there. When we go to work with state land to procure right-of-ways or anything, they charge us the highest possible dollar amount there is. They make it very hard for us to even do any kind of dealings, let alone what the poor public has to go through. I just thought it was something I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to look at the possibility of legislation, or however they would go about it, to have the same payment in lieu of taxes given to us by the state that we get from the federal government. I think we have a million acres, 12% of our state land, or our county land is state land, and they're not paying their fair share. That was what I brought up for discussion.
Okay. Is that in the form of a motion, Supervisor Johnson?
I'd shorten it up a little bit, if, I just wanted to get the discussion going first.
Okay. So I'll translate it, just to make sure I got it clear in my mind. The federal government pays us PILT monies, which is roughly 9% of the value of taxation we should get, so they're basically robbing us of 91%. Now, the state land side of things, the million acres of state land here, the state, Arizona, is paying us zero for the state land, so they're robbing us of 100%.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Now, I was going to make a wisecrack, but I won't, I'll maintain the dignity of the chairmanship. And would this be something that we'd be bringing up at CSA, or would this be something, the association in October? Or is this something that we'd pursue independently?
My preference would be to have staff look at it and come back with a recommendation, have our attorneys look at it and say, "This is legally what can be done, or it has to be changed through a constitutional change," or whatever else, and that way then we could decide which direction.
So then we're looking for a motion to request staff, including the county attorney's office, to bring us back our options on how to deal with this particular issue?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to direct staff and the county attorney's office to come back with a position paper on how we can deal with the state regarding payments for land owned in Mojave County.
Then I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. I see County Administrator Hendrix wanted to make a comment, go ahead, Mike.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to remind the board that our legislative summit is October 8, and we'll need to possibly include putting that thought in the legislative format for CSA consideration.
I think that would be one of many approaches we should consider taking, so that's good. And if I can add to that, County Administrator Hendrix, if you could, if you can give, find out from each county, the amount of state lands there, because you want to make it, the best interest is self-interest when you want people to vote a certain way. All right. We have a motion, we have a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item forty-one, discussion of possible action. Ray, an ordinance to impose an excise tax on export of water from Mojave County. I brought this item up, first, can I have a motion for discussion?
I'll make a motion for discussion.
Thank you.
And second motion.
Thank you. I brought this issue up because when I was in Phoenix during my day-long water trek, this was brought to my attention as a potential, and I stress the word "potential," method of readjusting the scales. And I don't want to leave any stone unturned. It is my great hope that the administrative law process, or perhaps a judicial process to follow that, would help us. It is my great hope that the political process in Washington, DC, will help us on this issue. I am a belt-sent... I am a belts-and-suspenders type of guy, so we need to be looking for Plan Cs and D to fit with those Plans A and B. And I'm not going to be a cynic, I do believe our congressional delegation, I hope our congressional delegation will be looking after Mojave County on this issue. I hope that the wheels of justice will determine that Mojave County has standing to deal with water, privately-owned water in Mojave County, at least has a seat at the table. But hope is one thing, do something and another, and see which comes true, and I'm on the do-something-on-the-other-hand boat. And so what I'm thinking is, we should turn this over to the County Attorney's Office to do the necessary research to see if we have the legal power to impose this tax on exported water. I want to make sure it's very clear, this has nothing to do with water that is drawn and used in Mojave County, Arizona. It has everything to do with those who would buy land, then build pipelines to take water out of Mojave County, Arizona, whether that's Freeport-McMoran, whether it's farmers up north, or recent farmers up north, whether it's other people. It's a plan to attempt to readjust the scales, and this is just the beginning stages of looking into it. So is there any other comments on this?
Mr. Chairman, no, I agree. I think it's a great idea, especially, you know, explained it well enough that we're looking at somebody who actually takes water and pumps it out, not looking for a water hauler who happens to take right across the border. So no, I wholly support it.
Yeah. Having said that, is there a motion on item 41 on the agenda?
I'll make a motion to have staff and the County Attorney's Office investigate our possible use of an excise tax on the export of water, and report to us as soon as possible.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, folks, that brings us to the conclusion of our meetings. I believe it's now 10:21, which means this is probably the fastest Board of Supervisors meeting on record. Congratulations. Have a great day, and we'll see you later. We're adjourned.